Call the regular city commission meeting of October 13th, 2015 to order. May we stand for pledge of allegiance?
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Amy, could you call the roll pins?
Commissioner Foreman?
Here.
Commissioner Fisziak?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Here.
Mayor Metzger?
Here. Okay, the first item is public discussions, items not on the agenda.
Todd Zachary, 68 Devonshire, I have a little bit of recycling report. The, oh, the September tonnage was 21 and a half tons. August was 25 tons plus. And July was 28 tons, almost 29. So those were the, that's the tonnage. Nothing, oh, you'll hear another report from Leslie about the recycling, but I just want to do a short one. No timer today, but, so for my visual aid, I have this. And this is, this was grown in our backyard, and as you notice, it's very heavy. This one here probably weighs about 25 pounds. And this is what I notice in the city as I go around after Halloween. A lot of times, a pumpkin like this is next to the landfill bin, which means it's going to go in, in the landfill forever, not the other one where it's compost. So actually, so when you have this, I'm sure a lot of you know this, but if you have a pumpkin like this, put this in the compost bin as opposed to the landfill bin. That's basically the thing, the main thing. So if you have, let's say, not everybody has a pumpkin that they're gonna have. So you're probably wondering, how much is this gonna save? Come on, you know? So let's say just 100 homes have a pumpkin. Let's say five pounds. Well, that's 500 pounds of material that could go into the landfill, but we don't want that in the landfill. We want it into the compost. So there you have it. That's it. Any questions?
Is that one of your terrific tips?
This is one of my terrific tips. Thank you very much. I'm, thank you. I'm about, still about 36 terrific tips, and it's growing slowly, very slowly. So if anybody out there in TV land has a tip, email me at wprtv@yahoo.com or call me. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Hi, Leslie Jones, 19 Fairwood. I just wanted to thank everybody for who participated in the recycling fair on the 26th. It was really successful, and I want to thank also our volunteers, Jay, Jason, and people from the community that helped to make it a success, and your kids. We took in 1,200 pounds of metal, that much I know. I'm trying to find out how much we took in in electronics, but that was the bulk of it. Took in a lot of electronics and a pretty good amount of shredding. So I think we're gonna do it at least once more, once every year, but possibly twice. Maybe we will, I think we're gonna work on planting one for the spring. So, yeah, that was, it was great, and thank you, everyone. I also wanted to announce that we have another event coming up on the 19th, Trees for Tomorrow with Kasek Endur. She did a great presentation at Lily and Dean's classes in March, and she will be coming back to talk about tree and tree care and tree health, so I hope everyone can attend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other, anyone else? Okay. And we'll close public discussion and move on to the 2015 Beautification Awards. Commissioner Foreman?
Yes, we have the presentation. So we'll dim the lights for a few moments.
Thank you.
So this is the year 2015, obviously, and this is our second beautification awards that we've done the past two years. They've been going for quite a few years, and there were a few years where they weren't done. We kind of resurrected this process last year. So this year, we have five homes that will be receiving an award. Working out the pointer here, I'm sorry. So made wonder, who are these people that are walking around taking photos and giving people awards? Well, I'm one of them, but the rest of us, I mean, we're all really just your neighbors, essentially. We're an informal group that kind of, we just get together, and we decided we really want to recognize people for making improvements to their homes and their properties that just really make our whole city look better, because it helps all of us. So we've got members from the city commission, planning commission, DVA, historical commission, recreation commission, the garden club, as well as two other residents at large. Again, as I mentioned, we've given awards for many years, just the past two years consecutively. Now, this is the zone map. We've decided, or divided the city into seven separate zones based on, hopefully, a similar number of homes per zone. And then there are seven members of the group. So we assign one zone to each member. That member goes around and finds a few homes they'd like to nominate, and then we come back together as a group and we pare it down. So our first this evening is 147 Cambridge, and that's the home of Mr. Conrad Stack and Carol Boyd. And Dave has a few things he'd like to say about that home.
Every one of these five homes is gonna have a brief description of the house, so we'll just read those off. 147 Cambridge, owned by Conrad Stack and Carol Boyd. An unusual curvy linear bed design makes 147 Cambridge a standout. It starts at the home's front entrance, where it's planted with hedge roses and day lilies, cascading down to deep red sedum near the front walk. The bed then curves again to take in a stately old oak tree echoing the turn of the sidewalk itself. Between this long shaped bed and the paved driveway is a loose pebble path to the front entrance. A Japanese maple, ferns, barberry, hydrangeas, and pachysandra fill the ambling raised foundation beds.
So Conrad and Carol are both here. We could all just give them a little round of applause. Next one this evening is one I'm sure you all recognize from one of the characteristic items on the front lawn, the gaslights. This is 21 Norwich, and it's owned and beautifully maintained by Fred Brown and Dr. Dorothy Pezekowski. A welcoming port cochere and charming wall of garden come together in a classic example of residential beautification at 21 Norwich. Madely trimmed hedges border the raised private garden seating area anchored by stone block posts that are topped with functioning gas lamps. The space is planted with large hydrangeas, ornamental grasses, and two tall columnar trees accented with whimsical metal flower sculptures. The pebble finished drive leads to an entrance porch decorated with potted plants and colorful annuals. So leave, Dorothy and Fred. Ah, hello. We have something for you.
Oh, thank you.
And Dave, the next home we have this evening is 19 Oakland Park.
Yep, 19 Oakland Park Boulevard is owned by Rajan and Susan Tlang. Thoughtfully designed and maintained, terrace beds and steps lead up to a beautiful new Georgian colonial entrance at 19 Oakland Park Boulevard. The tiered levels include a weathered wood garden bench tucked among the sculpted hedges, large pink hydrangeas, golden day lilies, hosta, bright yellow begonias, and lots of pachysandra gom cover. Shades of pink and red begonias provide bright accents across the yard, tying into the large hydrangeas and distinctive kusa dogwood that terminate in a curved hedge to provide privacy and define the property.
It's 9 Oakland Park. I don't know if Raj or Susan are here, actually, but I think we can clap for them anyway.[596.66][596.66](applause) The next home we have this year is One Sylvan, and this one will look very familiar to you. I think you've probably seen it on the home and garden tour recently. It isn't easy being a corner lot on a busy alley. Completely restored by its current owners, One Sylvan has had its share of issues with adjacent construction, rogue lighting, and cars run amok across the property. But this lady in white still remains a standout with its matching privacy fence and porch railing contrasting with a fresh pop of color provided by hydrangeas and rows of shereen. The front path is bordered with low growing hosta, colorful begonias, sedum, and ground cover. That's One Sylvan, and Todd and Jessica Hersick are the homeowners there that have done such a great job with that home. And one final home this evening, 58 Amherst.
58 Amherst is owned by Adam and Janelle Zlumrick. 58 Hammer, Amherst is a charming mix of architectural and landscape artistry and craftsmanship. Low evergreen hedges define three individual and unique garden beds, starting at the street level where the zariscaping boulders and painted fern surrounded by Canadian ginger ground cover echo the color of the painted window and porch trim. A clever and unexpected zigzag hedge delineates the next tier that includes a collection of astilbe and hosta, and feathery grasses add movement in the breeze. The home is anchored by the use of dark shingles and cocoa brown cedar shakes with an artistic rain chain guiding the eye back to the landscaping. Large oak leaf shrubs soften the foundation, and an ever-changing display welcomes visitors to the ample covered porch and recessed entrance door.
That's 58 Amherst, Adam and Janelle. Thank you. Thanks for coming. So tokens of appreciation, we pass these out. You'll see there's commemorative tile. It's got this year, slightly different color scheme from last year, and also a photo of the home that was taken by resident Jim Zupan. So congratulations to all the winners tonight. Thank you so much for all you do to keep your homes beautiful and help our city look as beautiful as it does. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shall I put forward?
You may note, you may have noticed that the awards just went residential this year, and there was a decision, there was some discussion around one of our commercial structures that you now see on the screen. And because of timing, it was decided to stick with residential this time. So while I didn't have time to go over there and study and be able to describe the plantings, I felt that there was, it was necessary, instead of waiting a year, this was too important not to recognize very specially, and so we have a mayoral proclamation for Lee Hartnett and Harp Dunlap. If you would stand up.
Wow, do you have a scroll?[800.32][800.32](laughter) Are there trumpets?
I'll try to scroll. Where are the trumpets? Allow me to read this, the mayoral proclamation. Okay. Whereas in 2013, Harp Dunlap Enterprises purchased the building at 24280 Woodward Avenue in the adjacent parking lots. And whereas, after the purchase, the owners embarked on a major interior and exterior renovation project, parking lot reconfiguration and resurfacing, and landscaping planning. And whereas, the renovations have drastically improved the appearance of the building, drastically. Let me emphasize drastically. And contribute to the beauty of the community at a highly visible location. And whereas, the renovation projects have been completed, and the owners celebrated their grand opening on September 14th, 2015, in grand style. Now therefore, I, Kurt Metzger, recognize Harp Dunlap Enterprises for their hard work and dedication to the community through the enhancement of their property located in 24280 Woodward Avenue. And I extend my heartfelt appreciation for their contribution to our business district and to the city of Pleasant Ridge. And I wanted, I'd love to describe the chairs that you have in that.[876.13][876.13](laughter) That was very hard for me to get out of, but not because it was hard to get out of, it was just too comfortable. But I just want to recognize, and it's just a wonderful, I make a special drive just to go by there and look at it every day, so it's terrific.
Well, thank you so much, and thanks to the city council and the planning commission and all of Jim's help, because we couldn't have gone at such a fast clip without it. So we really appreciate all your support.
That was a great experience.
But it's beautiful. All right. Thank you very much. Where's the scroll and where's the trumpets?
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, consideration of establishing a public hearing on Tuesday, November 10th, 2015, at 7:30 PM to solicit public comments on an ordinance granting to Consumers Energy Company its successors and assigns the right, power, and authority to lay, maintain, and operate gas mains, pipes, and services on, along, across, and under the highways, streets, alleys, bridges, waterways, and other public places, and to do a local gas business in the city of Pleasant Ridge, Oakland County, Michigan, for a period of 30 years. Jim?
This one's Amy's agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Amy? Here. See, it's yours.
Consumers Energy provides natural gas services throughout the entire city of Pleasant Ridge. They operate under a franchise to be able, with the city to be able to work in the public right of ways and streets and your burns and other areas. So what they're asking for today is an extension of that franchise. The current franchise is expiring, so the extension would go on for another 30 years. Ursula Warren is here. She is from Consumers Energy. If you have any questions about the ordinance, and also the city attorney, Mr. Need, has reviewed the ordinance and worked with consumers to crack the language.
Mr. Ray, questions?
General question, has anything materially changed in the agreement since the past 30 year term, aside from dates and other obvious items?
That would go to your city attorney. I didn't see anything different.
I can't say word for word it's identical, but it is very substantially similar to the current franchise. It's expiring.
I would only ask, is it comparable to arrangements in similar municipalities?
Yes. There is a template ordinance that's used in most communities. We added a little additional protection and the whole harmless language, but basically this is the same, almost identical franchise of most communities that are now renewing their franchises or utilizing.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And I would just say, this is just, the vote we're taking tonight is just to schedule a public hearing. So if residents wanted to attend that and make comments, that they would have the opportunity to do so at that time.
Residents can also send in their comments. They can call them in. They can email them in. That'll be all included in the posting. So as long as they're in before the public hearing, we'll be able to include them in all of your information for that packet on November 10th.
And all the information is online right now?
Yes, it is.
With this conjunction, with this meeting. Yeah. Questions back to you?
Just a quick, when does the current franchise agreement expire?
It expires in December.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move that public hearing be established on Tuesday, November 10th, 2015, at 7:30 PM to solicit public comments on ordinance granting to Consumers Energy Company its successors and assigns the right, power, and authority to lay, maintain, and operate gas mains, pipes, and services on, along, across, and under the highways, streets, alleys, bridges, waterways, and other public spaces, and to do a local gas business in the city of Pleasant Ridge, Oakland County, Michigan, for a period of 30 years.
Do you want to support?
Second.
Can we have a vote?
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is governmental reports. Who would like to start? Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Gary McGelvery, I'm your county commissioner. I just wanted to bring you up to date. Recently, we adopted our budget, $800 million budget for the county. And in doing that, we finally got some agreement on tri-party road funding. As you know, a lot of the counties down, or the cities down here at this end of the county haven't been using the tri-party money. They don't have the, their third to put in. Tri-party funding, just so everybody knows, is one-third from the road commission, one-third from the county, and one-third from the municipality. The other problem has been is that most of our roads down here are not county roads. If you go to the north end of the county, every road there, including the subdivisions, are county roads. So they can use that tri-party money just about anywhere in the city. So trying to get our point across that it's important that we equalize the funding for tri-party money so that some of the cities can use them a little bit more. So we've asked that they change the formula somewhat so that it may include non-county roads, city roads in other words, and that it's some kind of equity funding based on population. So that way, that more money would be able to be used down here in the south end of the county. So I just wanted to bring you up to date. It's not cast in iron, but at least they're willing to talk a little bit, so.
That's okay.
Yeah. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Yep.
Hi, my name is Kevin Deegan Kraus. I'm a member of the Ferndale School Board. I live in Ferndale, just south of Pleasant Ridge. And I've talked to a couple members of the commission, and they asked me to come and talk to all of you about how schools are funded in Michigan. I think this is because some commissioners have been having trouble falling asleep during meetings, and so I thought it would be useful to talk a little bit about this. And I have to say, in my day job, I teach about politics at Wayne State University. In the evenings, I'm on the school board, and neither of those prepared me for the complexity of Michigan's school funding system. So I've spent a couple years just trying to understand the basics of the system, and it's sort of been my mission to sort of try and explain this to other people. So what I want to do is, as briefly as possible, to talk just a little bit about this. This is the short version, believe it or not, and I'll try to keep it to six or seven minutes. There is a longer version, that if any of you are really masochistic, you can feel free to ask for, and I can talk to you. It's also, thanks to Commissioner Foreman, it's up online. I've done one of these at the commission, or at the rec center before. But I want to say just, just three things about this, and then sort of add one little item at the end. Michigan's school funding is insanely complicated. For local districts, it is remarkably limited, and there is no doubt, in my mind at least, and in the minds of almost anybody who looks at Michigan's school funding, that it is, that it is on the decline. And I think we need to understand all three of those before we can think about what it is that we can actually do. So just a couple things. I want to talk about how complicated it is. It used to be simple. Is this good? All right. So it used to be simple. Further, this way. All right? Tell me when to stop. Tell me when to stop. All right, good. I'm in the way. Got it. So it used to be actually fairly simple. A little bit of money came from the federal government, some money came from the state, and almost everything came from local property taxes. And probably a lot of you remember the day when almost everything came from local, local property taxes. This meant a couple of things that caused dismay in the state. One was that property tax rates were actually quite high, and for people on fixed incomes in areas with high property growth, high property value growth, and so on, it became a squeeze. Plus, people don't like paying property tax. The other problem was that it meant that districts with really high property values had really high school funding, and districts with really low property values had really low school funding. And then it depended on whether the district was willing to tax itself to an extent that would pay for the schools. And in fact, one of your local residents, Gigi Vanderweil, lived in the Calcasca School District, which while she was there, voted not to have a millage, and therefore no schools, because they chose not to. So a lot of these led to controversy and discontent in the 1980s and early 1990s, and there were actually 11 different ballot issues between 1980 and 1994, all of which failed. 11 for 11 failed, until 1994, when Proposition A, as we now know it, actually managed to change Michigan's school funding formula. And it changes. So 1994 is the big year, and when we look at sort of things before and after, I think it's really important to understand how it is. It's interesting that no less radical, periodical in the Wall Street Journal called Proposition A "bungee jumping without knowing the length of the cord." And it really was a problem. It's also, as somebody who thinks and talks about legislation for a living, this is the prime example of not wanting to see how the sausage is made in terms of legislation. I mean, this really is ugly, messy legislation. The big change is that it shifted the major bulk of school funding from localities, which were almost two-thirds before 1994, to the state, which now accounts for roughly 80% of all education funding. So that two-thirds dropped to under 20%. The federal amount stayed really small at about 4%. And it gets more complicated than that, actually, because within that state amount, that 80%, there are sales taxes, there is a state property tax, there is income tax, there are taxes on gambling, there are taxes on alcohol, taxes on tobacco, the lottery, all of which goes into that, all of which goes into that pot. Furthermore, the pot of the school aid fund is not a maximum or a minimum. It is simply the amount designed for school. Certain monies flow into it, but some of those monies can flow out. So when the governor decided that it was, it was important to pay for pre-kindergarten education, that money came out of the school aid fund, even though it was never intended for that in the beginning. Or when previous governors have decided that universities and college districts would be funded, it comes out of that, even though it was never intended for that for the beginning. So this can be tapped. It can also be topped up by the state, but it's an extremely, extremely complicated funding system. So the state brings in most of the revenue, but from multiple, multiple different sources. And then in addition to that, there is a, there is a local component to this, which is the local non-homestead tax. So businesses, landlords, if there are any businesses or landlords here, you will know that you pay 18 mils on your property. You're nodding. You pay 18 mils on your property. Homeowners don't pay it. Only businesses, landlords, agricultural land, and so on, they pay it, nobody else. Making it even more complicated, this particular local tax needs to be approved by localities. There's usually about a 20-year gap, 20-year time period, and we've actually just come to that. So Proposition A was passed in 1994. In 1996, this school district passed that 18 mil tax. We have to approve it. We've topped it up since then with a, with an override, and now we're back at the point where we have to completely re-approve it. So what you'll see on the ballot in November, actually, is an 18 mil tax on homes, on non-homestead property, on businesses, on rental properties, and so on. So that's what you will see on your ballot. It's not a change in the tax. It's essentially a renewal, and it will continue things exactly as they are, but it has to be approved at the, at the local level. So that's the first thing. Things are incredibly complicated, coming from multiple sources in multiple ways, in ways that shift over time so that there's no stable funding for schools. The other thing that I think is really important that people don't necessarily see is that school funding in Michigan is really, from a school district perspective, really limited. School districts have almost no control over what can go on with their own funding. So all of those items in the school aid fund, those are, in the end, calculated into what's called a per pupil allowance. So every student who goes to schools unfortunately has a price tag attached to their head. That's why school districts constantly compete for those students. Every student has a dollar figure, and the amount that comes, depending on the district, is related to that student and nothing else. And that doesn't change, except that the state changes it slightly up or slightly down over time. But an individual school district can do nothing about that. It happens, it happens at the state level. The federal money doesn't change either, except at the federal level, so there's nothing we can do to change about that. And this local tax, which is the non-homestead tax, which is a little less than 20%, in our case, it's about 14%, this can only be changed by lowering it. So we could get rid of this tax, and we could eliminate basically the equivalent of one of our schools' revenues to pay for the entire, for the entire district, but we can't increase it. So it is statutorily fixed at 18 mils. We can't go any higher. You'll see, by the way, that the ballot language, if you look really closely, if you haven't fallen asleep yet, you look really closely at the ballot language that you'll see in November, it says 20 mils. The only reason that we've put 20 mils on there is so that we don't have to keep coming back and asking for increases to sort of top it up. As housing prices rise, the state takes a little bit away. We would otherwise have to go back and top that up. From the, from the taxpayer's standpoint, the really good news is that it will never ever, by state standards, rise above 18%. So that's there, simply so we don't have to come back, you waste money on a new election every few years to get that to top up. That explains that sort of minor, minor thing. So we can't increase it, we can only decrease it by not voting for this millage, something that, as a school district, I can say we simply can't afford to do. It would be the equivalent of taking away all the money that comes into the middle school, but still having to operate the middle school, something that we simply can't sustain as a district. Our other options are also really, really limited. For some school districts, there's something called hold harmless. These are the districts that had very large per pupil spending before Proposition A, and they were grandfathered in with that spending. They still have to vote for the amount that's above the state per pupil allowance, but they can keep it above. Unfortunately, the Ferndale School District isn't one of those, so we don't get those. We're surrounded by districts that do, but we don't. So that's not an option for us. So that's not an option for us. The second one is to ask voters for a millage to approve bond spending, basically that we can use over a short period of time, and it's only for facilities. We can't use it for anything but actual physical plant and physical plant-related stuff. And this, actually, voters did, and thank you very much to the voters who did in 2011. And so this has become a really important, excuse me, this has been really important for us. We're just finishing up the spending on that. But what this means is that you spend it in a bunch, and then you've got to go a long time before you can ask for the next one. So we don't know, it actually depends on what the voters are willing to do, it also depends on what property values are like and so on, because there are certain state mandates on this. So that's been done for now, we've spent it, I think we've spent it really well. The only option left for us is the worst-named tax in the history of humanity, the sinking fund. What this means, originally, it was devised for sinking money into the building so that they are maintained, so you can actually build a kind of ongoing maintenance procedure. This is the one kind that we don't do. Usually, there's a relatively small, something less than a millage, something this district doesn't do, but that we're at least contemplating. So we've got a study group up to see whether this is worth it, to see whether this is something citizens would support. So you may hear us on that. Even if we were to pass it, it would be relatively, quite small, you'd probably under a mil, and it would be just for buildings. It doesn't pay for operating expenses, for the classroom, or anything else. It's just for the physical plant and the physical envelope. So our options are really limited. As I said, the only real way we can go is down by not approving this November millage, can't go up. And we can't afford to go down because we're already declining. And this is the last thing that I want to say, and I just want to say it really quickly, that you may hear various people saying that school revenue is up, that other things are changing, changing in a positive direction, but no matter which research group you talk to, the state legislature, independent research groups that look at this, organizations that your mayor's been part of, all of them look at this and say that it has been declining. Now, if you look at the actual nominal dollars, what the amount of dollars are for any given year, there was a rise during the 2000s, and then a fall, and then kind of stasis. But what this doesn't take into account is the 2% inflation that's been happening roughly on average over that time, and you can see where inflation is in terms of what that really means. What that means is, if you adjust for inflation, the actual amount that schools get over the last 15 years has dropped by 15. So we've dropped in real dollars by about a percent a year, every single year. And this doesn't include the fact that the amount we're getting actually is increasingly incumbent to pay for teachers' pensions, and so even less of that goes into the classroom. So as a school district, I have to say, we are doing the absolute best we can with the limited funds that we've got, but we're stuck, and these things are getting worse. Now, that's a conversation for a different day, but it is a reality that we're dealing with constantly. And we're starting to see districts all over the state, even districts in really wealthy places, starting to go into deficit on a yearly basis, or even into debt. Even the really strong, economically powerful districts are starting to face all of these problems. So the question is, what can you do? Well, and I say this not as part of the school district, the school district doesn't advocate for or against it, I say this as a member of the school board and as a citizen of this school district. What you can do is, one of the things at least, is in November, turn out, go and vote, tell your friends, vote, and vote for the non-homestead millage. It keeps things exactly as they are. We can't make things any better for us by raising that tax, but we could make them a lot worse by not approving them. Other than that, there's not a whole lot we can do. Support your local schools, support those who actually support public education, and help us figure out how to square the circle. Value public education, talk to the great, talk to your neighbors about the great things this district is doing. We have increasing enrollments for the first time in a decade. We are looking at a really solid budget situation coming up. We're still fighting the declining state trends, but at least at the local level, we are turning around the financial situation and the enrollment situation. So that's the good news. The bad news is, no matter what we do, we're being squeezed by a state that doesn't seem to care about education very much. So that's all I want to say. I'm sorry it took so long, but if there are any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Yes, Kevin, thank you for that presentation. A lot of that sounds so very familiar to presentations we were giving ourselves last year.
City, it's the same thing, yep. You all know it very well.
The thing I would just ask for clarification on is, you mentioned 18 mils, it's a renewal that is already being paid by these same individuals.
That's right.
Landlords, property owners and such, but not regular homeowners.
That's right.
So it's 18 mils. So even though you're asking for 20, it's not a matter of, I trust these guys to keep it at 18.
No, no.
It's all a matter of, it cannot go above 18.
That's right.
It's state law.
State law does. So what happens normally is that as property values rise, the state says that you can only pull in money that's equivalent to a rise at the level of inflation. So they roll back the amount that you can actually ask for over time. If you set it at 20, what it means is that the rollbacks don't take effect until it comes in much later. But the state mandated maximum, we cannot ever go above 18. So even though it says 20, it just means we don't have to come back to you, have a needless special election, waste everybody's money, because we need that additional amount.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
That was very helpful.
Well, I mean, that's just scratching the surface, but if you have any other questions, you can find out information on the school district website, there's a millage information sheet. You'll see people coming door-to-door with information about this millage, and we will certainly let you know as we move to think about a sinking fund. We'll talk to this community and see whether it's something that the citizens would support. We want to make sure that what we do is good for our homeowners and our landlords, and also for our students. So, thank you very much.
One more question.
Yeah.
What's the name of that website? Is it Ferndale Millage Info?
I think FerndaleMillageInfo.org, I think. Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, I should know that off the top of my head, and I don't, I'm afraid. So if you wouldn't mind announcing that to everybody after. Thank you.
And I love the picture of you and the Dickens.
Thank you very much. I feel like we're in a Dickens novel.
I thought that was very effective. Before we move on to Chief, I wanted to recognize Raj Talang, who we all clapped for some time ago. But we did, Raj owns the home on Oakland Park Boulevard, we can certainly clap again. And I think, oh, still, there you go. I didn't want you to. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yeah, nicely done. Thanks. Chief.
I know, hard to believe, but I really don't have any, so I won't take up any of your time. I'm passing up an opportunity to speak.
We look forward to it.
Everything's good, status quo.
Okay, thank you. No other governmental reports? Okay. We'll move on to city commission liaison reports. Commissioner Perry, planning and DDA.
The planning commission and DDA met on September 28th. The city manager presented an overview of the proposed exterior design standards for discussion with the planning commission. These proposed standards would further define the ordinance regarding neighborhood compatibility. So that was a good discussion. The DDA discussed the Woodward Avenue-Main Street 696 intersection test project. The study is about calming traffic and the possible implementation of changes to this area. It's something that the different businesses along the DDA are really excited about, and the city manager will do a thorough report later in the meeting. And the study runs through October 19th. Is that still the right date?
That's right.
Great. Their next meeting will be Monday, October 26th, at 7:00 PM. The Woodward Avenue Action Association, the board of the WA3 just approved the complete streets plan for Woodward Avenue, which includes the whole 27 miles of Woodward. And that's what this part, this study sort of is incorporating, the work behind that. But it incorporates everything from the M1 rail to the bus rapid transit, protected bike lanes, sidewalks, and the plan helps redesign Woodward to become an avenue again instead of a highway. So there are some improved conditions that could really help pedestrians and cyclists, and all these municipalities around here, along here, and make it a more walkable, bikable, livable street. The Woodward Avenue Action Association also held their bike ride that we talked about from the Ford Highland Park Plant, and they went through the neighborhoods up here to Oakland Park Boulevard in Pleasant Ridge, and then headed back down on Woodward Avenue. And it was a great turnout. They had around 100 bikers, and it really showed that, you know, the possibility and also, you know, the desire and support for protected bike lanes on Woodward. So it was great. That's all I have. Thanks.
Commissioner Scott, historical commission.
I have a rather easy one this evening. We did not have a meeting for October, but our next meeting will be on Wednesday the 4th, 7:00 PM, at the community center. So please come out, discuss topics around the historical nature of the community. Thanks very much.
Commissioner Chrisiak, recreation commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Just like to thank everyone who donated boxes to the Box Castle event we had last month. We were inundated with boxes, but we were also inundated with some sad rainy weather. So we didn't have as much participation as hoped, but the kids who did come out had a great time, and I want to thank everyone who took the time to donate boxes for that event. Some future events for the recreation commission, being the Halloween season, the kids are getting ready, and they'll have plenty of opportunity to try out their costumes. First event will be the Kids Halloween Party, that's Friday, October 23rd, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, and this is primarily for child, children ages seven to 12. We ask a $3 admission fee, and please, if you can, if you plan on attending this event, please RSVP with the recreation department. For the younger kids, the following day, Saturday, October 24th, at 10:00 AM, we will have the toddler Halloween party, and that's up to ages six. If you're a family and your age is kind of mixed there, you know, we're definitely not going to, you know, age-check at the door. If you need to pick one, you know, go ahead and do that. But that would be Friday and Saturday, the 23rd and the 24th. And then on Sunday, the 25th, I know this is a day that the entire community looks forward to, this will be the Halloween Hay Ride in Gainesboro Park from 4:00 to 6:00 PM on Sunday, and it's always a great event, face painting, bouncy houses, pony rides, everything you could possibly imagine in Gainesboro Park for the Halloween Hay Ride. That's the 25th of October. In November, we'd like to let everyone know that we will be doing the Thanksgiving Artist Market again, the weekend of the 13th and 14th of November. This is always a well-attended event, where local artists are able to interact with residents and sell their wares for the upcoming holidays. And Friday, we'll have a kickoff soiree at 6:00 o'clock. This is a $5 admission, and years past, we've always had a great opening event, very social, and always look forward to that. So that'll be at 6:00 on Friday, the 13th. And then Saturday, at 10:00 AM until 4:00 PM, it'll be a continuation of the artist market. So that's the Thanksgiving Artist Market. The last item, an afternoon tea at the Townsend Hotel and holiday shopping in Birmingham. This is a field trip event, and I'll ask Scott to come up and if he could speak a little bit more about that event and some other things on the recreation agenda.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Mayor and Commission, as Jason mentioned, we do have a number of trips coming up for the 50-plus set, and afternoon tea at the Townsend, and holiday shopping in Birmingham is one of those, and that's on November 19th, from 11:00 to 3:00. It's $42, and that includes the tea and the transportation, and we already have, I think, six or seven people signed up for that, so we do still have some spaces available for that. Along with that, on December 1st, I know this is way in advance, but we have a Painting with a Twist Holiday Edition, from 11:00 to 1:00. It's $35, that includes your picture to take home. So we're trying to increase those offerings for that group, with some daytime events and things to occupy their time. So you wouldn't believe the number of people that during the summer come in and say, "So what do you guys do after the pool closes? Like, you just, like, don't work, or what?" So, and they say, "No, we have plenty of stuff to do." So last week was one of those plenty-of-stuff-to-do weeks for us. Just wanted to give you an update on some of the things that happened, and the numbers that we had were pretty impressive. So on Monday, we had an event with the garden club, with the Cranbrook Bats. There was between 175 and 190 people there to see that event and to have some donuts and ciders by the garden club. On Thursday, on October 8th, we held a health fair. Walgreens was there, they gave out 60 flu shots. They've done five other clinics off-site, and we were by far the most they've done. I think the most they said they had before that was like 30. So that was a great. They also gave out 30 massages, Cladaw, Chiropractic of Ferndale was able to do that for people. That same day, we had a 50-plus bingo, we had 34 players there, and on Saturday, we held a mom-to-mom sale. We had 176 people come through to buy things, and that included 17 vendors and moms selling things. So along with that, Shawnee has made a little push to get some donations from local businesses to be able to kind of bring them into the events and be able to promote themselves. And so far, we've got donations from Trader Joe's, Cladaw, Chiropractic of Ferndale, Walgreens, Myers, and local Doc Deserbo's office. So they've given various services and donations of money to the community center and recreation department, so we can offer these programs. So we want to thank them, and just, yeah, last week was busy, and we were proud of all the numbers that we did, and it's pretty amazing. People in Pleasant Ridge are coming out and taking advantage of the community center, so we have a lot more coming up, so stay tuned.
That's cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When I worked for the Census Bureau, they always asked me, "What do I do the other nine years?" So. I just sit back. It's great, great gig.
Wait for the numbers.
That's right. Next, Commissioner Foreman, committee liaison.
Yes, just a few quick items regarding Ferndale Schools. I found the website for Ferndale Millage Info, it's FerndaleVotingInfo.org. So if you'd like to get some information on that, about what you got here tonight, or what you've already heard about, please check that site out. A few other items, homecoming just happened. It was this past Friday. Ferndale's homecoming parade and football game occurred, and they were up against Avondale. I remember last year was a much bigger event than previous years, if I had been around in this area, and I wasn't able to make it this year, but fortunately, Commissioner Perry was able to make it, and she even participated in some way. Not to put you on the spot, but I wondered if you might have a couple of quick details you could share.
Well, I was very fortunate, and I got to drive some of the royal candidates in my car, and I ended up having the king, actually, in my car. So it was lovely. But it was a great, yeah, it was a great event, tons of kids, tons of adults there, you know, down, it was a wonderful event for all ages, and then I think it got a bunch of people into the football game, too, to cheer them on. So it was a neat night. They're putting out, that's a great event, and they had great weather. Thanks.
Well, thank you.
Even for talking to them.
Next item would be the superintendent's advisory council meeting. This was held, the first meeting of the year was held, and I think the primary focus of it was to educate on the upcoming millage request. So that just happened last night. The all-district Fall Festival is something that's actually coming up. It's Saturday, October 17th, from 11:00 to 3:00. This is for the entire school district. This event always offers a great variety of fun activities, one of which is the haunted hallway, and this is parents and kids getting together to decorate a hallway in a very scary manner, and do whatever they can to just really kind of scare the pants off of you, not literally. But don't worry, if your kids get spooked by really scary things, you can always kind of hold up a little pass, and they'll send you through and lower scare level, just to make sure it's not a little too much. Everyone can participate and enjoy this event. Election Day, of course, November 3rd. You may have heard there's going to be something on the ballot about the Ferndale Public Schools' millage renewal. Please vote. And finally, just for kicks, this is an adult talent show that will be taking place on Saturday, November 7th, starting at 7:00 PM at the Loving Touch in Ferndale. This happened last year and in previous years. The purpose of it is to raise money for the schools to allow children to go to the open classroom camp. It covers scholarships, so that every child can go to the camp, even if they can't necessarily afford it. So not only is it for a good cause, but it's also quite entertaining, just to see parents doing things that embarrass themselves, or showcasing their many talents. We have a lot of great musical talents in the city and around the city, and you'll see a lot of that there. So that's November 7th, starting at 7:00 p.m. at the Loving Touch. And that's it for me and Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other? Okay. Move on to the next item, it's the Consent Agenda. We have four items, just to mention one specifically, is a resolution recognizing October as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We also have the annual permit for work on state highways through the Michigan Department of Transportation. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Your Honor, I move the Consent Agenda be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
Any discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crzyak?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is Pleasant Ridge Recreation Commission Appointments. Any... Who wants to?
Sure.
Sure.
We received two applications, we have two openings for the Recreation Commission. We've received two applications after the City Commission put it out for approximately 30 days. The applications received were Kathryn Russell and Richard Cook. Kathryn Russell has been in the community for a while, she served on the old pool board, I believe, she served on Recreation Commission previously. And Mr. Cook is actually running the community garden for us this year. So I've presented both of the applications to you with a recommended motion for appointment.
Okay. Are there any questions, Frank?
No questions, but I would definitely want to recognize the service of Mr. Victor Fernari and Mrs. Diana Perino. They served on the commission before tonight's appointment, and I served with them for the last few years, and I just wanted to, you know, let the community know and recognize that, you know, they're a very valuable part of that commission for the years that they served, and their absence will be missed, but that we look forward to working with Kathryn and Richard going forward, so...
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I thought that both candidates show quite a great deal of experience and really bring a lot to the position. I was quite impressed.
Well, Mr. Cook has already taken a leadership role with the Ridge Roots, the community garden. He's been working with the Recreation Commission already, working with Gene Russell as a Recreation Commissioner, and really reinvigorating and looking for new creative ways to engage the community at the garden, so it's a really natural fit for Mr. Cook to be appointed to this position.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve, to appoint?
Mayor, I move that Ms. Kathryn Russell be appointed to the Pleasant Ridge Recreation Commission to fill a partial term, term to expire December 31st, 2017, and that Mr. Richard Cook be appointed to the Pleasant Ridge Recreation Commission to fill a partial term, term to expire December 31st, 2016.
Is there support?
Second.
May we have a vote?
Commissioner Crzyak?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. The next item, interlocal cost-sharing agreement for the Woodward Neighborhood Bicycle Wrap Transportation Alternative Program, TAP, 2015 project. Jim?
Thank you. This is a small project, but it's one that Ferndale is spearheading and is, I guess, leading in partnership with five other local communities. So it's Ferndale, Pleasant Ridge, Hazel Park, Oak Park, Huntington Woods, and Royal Oak. The project is to create a neighborhood bicycle network through these six communities, all in the, I guess, lower Woodward, lower Oakland County Woodward corridor. The request tonight is approval of an interlocal agreement to allow Ferndale to administer the TAP grant on our behalf, and then we would reimburse them for our share of the project cost. We're also requesting an approval of an expenditure of not more than $2,000. Like I said, this is a small project for us. Ferndale has quite a bit more improvements that they're proposing to do. As you may be aware, Ferndale went through their Ferndale Moves Planning Process a year or two ago to create a non-motorized plan for the whole community. This is a step towards them implementing that and then also kind of bringing along some regional connectivity. I took the liberty of borrowing a presentation that Ferndale staff prepared for their City Commission, so I'll just run through it real quickly. TAP, it's Transportation Alternatives Funding, it's administered through SEMCOG, it's an MDOT program, and it's for non-motorized improvements that benefits pedestrians, bicyclists, et cetera. So typically shared use paths, streetscapes. Ferndale used this funding when they did their West Nine Mile and Livedonoy Bike Lane and Streetscape projects. So the purpose is to basically create awareness of a connected bicycle path system throughout these six communities. And the pathway, it's kind of interesting, the 17.1-mile loop, it connects at least two central business districts, a number of employment centers, 13 parks, 10 schools, two libraries, and one university, all in this area right around here. All of the bike paths are not on Woodward, that's why it's the Neighborhood Bicycle Network. If you can't ride up and down Woodward yet, at least you can get around in other ways. So this is the route map, and you'll see that this is... Hard for me.
You're supposed to know this.
Yeah, I don't have this memorized. I make the map, so you know, it's not embedded in my DNA. This is Nine Mile, obviously you have Ten Mile, 696, and then you have Eleven Mile. So the loop continues and it rings downtown in Ferndale. Of course, Nine Mile has its bike infrastructure now, and then continues up to one of those neighborhood streets. Goes up Ridge, crosses at Oakland Park Boulevard and Sylvan, jogs down to Indiana, continues down Woodward Heights, down into Hazel Park, continues up Bermuda into Royal Oak, crosses at Lincoln, continues down Scotia, and then on another road over here. Got a name. So that's basically, and then it continues down Oak Park Boulevard to Drayton, where you can get around. So that's the routing. The proposed elements in Ferndale are more substantial, some high-visibility crosswalks, some wayfinding hubs, shared lane markings and bike lanes. In Pleasant Ridge, it will consist merely of local bike route signage. All of the streets that it's traveling on in Pleasant Ridge are very low-volume residential streets, so we don't need necessarily, or have the funding, or we don't have the planning in place to support any of these higher-cost hardscape elements yet. We do have some bike route signage, some wayfinding signage benefits, we don't need to cover that. This is some Ferndale-specific, this is some of the high-visibility crosswalk things, these are hawk signals, pedestrian actuated, that light up and flash and alert a motorist so that pedestrians crossing mid-block. Ferndale's doing a number of those improvements right now. Project aligns with existing plans, and this is why MDOT is giving us money for it, some more Ferndale projects. So, that's really it. $2,000 is a small piece of the overall pie. The overall grant is about $300,000, so we have a small part of it. And that $2,000 is a knock to exceed. I think our actual estimated expenditure right now is about $1,700. The money would come out of the local and major streets funds, since Oakland Park Boulevard and Ridge are major streets at this point, and then Sylvan and Indiana and Woodward Heights are local streets. So we'll use a combination of funding, already budgeted for but unallocated specifically. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on this agenda.
Any questions?
Mayor, if I could, I would just like to extend my appreciation for bringing this to the commission tonight and your work with the neighboring communities. I think this is one of those exciting baby steps that we're experiencing along the Woodward corridor, attempts at connectivity between communities, so I appreciate the work that you and staff have done on this. The question I have as far as sign-specific, for Pleasant Ridge, I know our little segment of the route may not be as extensive as other communities. Would we be able to get signage that was specific to our community, say, wayfinding arrow pointed towards Gainesboro, or a directional sign for, you know, the Community Center? I mean, we're all very familiar with where those are, but maybe if, you know, there were residents coming from other communities who may want to enjoy Gainesboro Park, or, you know, would we have signage along the route that would direct them to those specific locations in Pleasant Ridge? Or would the signs be more, I've seen them in Royal Oak and Ferndale where it's, Royal Oak is 0.8 miles this way, or Ferndale's 2 miles this way. I mean, could we get specific locations in Pleasant Ridge signage for those locations?
Possibly. Because this is a state program through SEMCOG, there's typically a lot of strings attached, so I don't know the answer to that. The, on the record, off the record answer is, we can always add a little parasite something to the signs that are already there afterwards, once we get our ducks in a row, you know, low-cost thing, with the signs all in place. So I'll ask the question of Ferndale when we start to go through the design process for all that. Yeah, it's a good, I think it's a good opportunity for us to maybe build on that.
Yeah, because I know if I was, say, had my children, or we had gone into a community, you know, that maybe I wasn't as sure of where the parks were, signage like that would definitely increase our, you know, enjoyment of that route and lead to probably more continued usage of that route if we knew, oh, well, there's this, you know, this great little park, you know, in Ferndale, or, you know, Hazel Park has this great, you know, location where we can have a picnic or whatever, you know? So I would like to just make sure that people who would be using those routes, you know, kind of knew, hey, Gainesboro Park, you know, we're going to be investing money in the future, you know, if you bring a picnic basket to Pleasant Ridge, you're more than welcome to, you know, enjoy our beautiful new park, so...
Yeah, sure thing.
And, yeah, I would just continue on, you know, my original remarks about the connectivity. I mean, I'm really excited about, you know, what is the potential for connectivity along Woodward. You know, I know Ann is really involved and has spent a lot of time on this, are involved with the WA3, and I see a project like this as being, you know, the baby steps towards, you know, the bigger connectivity puzzle that Southeast Oakland County and the region really is, you know, trying to figure out right now, so...
Mayor, a quick question on the crosswalks along Oakland Park. We've had some prior conversations about pedestrian walking across Woodward, Oakland Park. Does this give us an opportunity to rethink the crosswalk markings or other things that make it easier for pedestrian traffic across Oakland Park?
Well, yes and no. That was one of the things that I had a lot of discussions with Ferndale staff about when they were scoping the project before they submitted the application, and we actually were going around and around with some options for things that we could do in this grant at the Oakland Park-Sylvan Crossing. Ultimately, we did not include those because it ended up being very expensive to put anything in there, because then you have to do it to MDOT standards, and they follow ASHTO standards, and it was getting a little out of hand. It was raising our project contribution cost to, I think, over $30,000. So I think we can do it cheaper and better on our own, looking at that, at the Oakland Park-Sylvan Crossing, because there's bikes, and there's pedestrians, and there's different things that both of them need. So that's one thing that we're going to continue to work on, but just that ultimately, we decided not to pursue that through this grant.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Do we have a motion to support?
Mayor, I move the City of Pleasant Ridge hereby supports the City of Ferndale's Transportation Alternatives Program, or TAP, grant application to the Michigan Department of Transportation for a connected bike route through the cities of Pleasant Ridge, Ferndale, Oak Park, Huntington Woods, Royal Oak, and Hazel Park, and that the City of Pleasant Ridge approves the interlocal agreement between the participant cities to follow Ferndale to administer the TAP funding grant for the Woodward Corridor Neighborhood Bicycle Network Project and approve funding not to exceed $2,000 for Pleasant Ridge's share of the total project cost.
What, I didn't have to say that? Is there support?
Second.
Can we take a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crzyak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, next item, update regarding Woodward Avenue-Main Street Test Project. Another challenge.
John Johnson.
That's right.
Hey, I just wanted to give the commission an update on the Complete Streets test projects. I think it's been visible to anyone who drives through in or out of Pleasant Ridge over the past few weeks that we're in the midst of one of these test projects right now. The background, there's been a Woodward Complete Streets Plan, Commissioner Perry referred to that, that that was recently approved at the WA3 level who's been overseeing that effort. That is for Woodward Avenue. It's a complete streets plan all the way from Hart Plaza Downtown all the way out to Pontiac, spanning the entire 27 miles. Folks may be familiar with the Woodward and 696 Complete Streets Plan that we conducted, we started it about a year ago, wrapped that out in the spring. That was specifically looking at Woodward Avenue and Main Street from basically the southern end of the ditch to the northern end of the ditch. And that was in response to the fact that the Woodward Complete Streets Plan didn't really address that very complicated and complex area with many multiple streets carrying many, 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 tens of thousands of cars every day intersecting, and how you do a complete street through that spaghetti of automotive wonderfulness. So that was the next effort. And then we're working right now on a local street traffic calming plan and effort that's still gestating, but that's what else is going on. So the test that's happening on Woodward right now is part of this process, so the iterative process, plan, test, review, implement. Through the planning process for the Woodward 696 Complete Streets area, they identified some short-term fixes that could be done to improve conditions with staying within the substantial function and form of the intersection as it exists today, and then identified some long-term moves where when things get reconstructed, how we might reimagine how the area looks and functions. So this test that's happening right now is a test of some of those short-term moves that were proposed as part of that plan, using low-cost methods, barrels, and paint, basically, to see if the recommendations in the short term are feasible, if they maintain adequate vehicle access, vehicle function through the intersection while improving pedestrian and bike opportunities and the pedestrian bike experience in the area. So right now, we're in that testing phase. That's what the barrels are, they're testing out, will just work. We have a traffic engineer who is helping us out, he's collecting data, he's doing studies, he has cameras out there, he's got traffic counters, so he's taking all of this to assess if the level of service at that intersection is equivalent before and after the test. And one thing to keep in mind is the level of service does not necessarily refer to the, how far you're backed up on Woodward, refers to how long it takes you to get through the intersection, and does the throughput at the intersection, is it the same? So after we do the review, depending on what the results of that study are, either we can then move to implementation, or if we find that the tests actually did negatively impact vehicle function through the intersection, we go back to planning and figure out what our next plan is. So basically, testing, we're currently doing a capacity study. It's scheduled to be removed next Monday, although it was three days late being installed because of the weather, so it's scheduled to be taken down next Monday. Could potentially happen a day or two later, depending on the contractors' availability to come and take all their stuff away. So then everything will be restored to its previous function. We'll do the review through fall and winter of 2015, and then if we need to move to implementation, we'll start to work with MDOT. So this was the recommendation of that Woodward 696 Complete Streets study, and the core recommendations in the short term were tightening and slowing traffic while maintaining adequate capacity for vehicles. So some of the things were to try to eliminate excess capacity in roads where we have it right now. One thing I always point to is that Woodward at Oakland Park and Sylvan has eight lanes, and it carries about 45,000 cars a day. And Woodward/Main Street at 696 has 14 travel lanes, and it carries about 50,000 cars a day. And it's a rule of thumb in traffic engineering world that a lane is capable of handling, comfortably handling about 10,000 cars a day. So if you just do the math, at 14 lanes, we could really carry 140,000 cars a day just on Woodward through these intersections at an acceptable level of service. Might not be as... And pedestrians experience space in a very different way than cars do. So, if we can start to take back some of that excess space for cars, and shorten some of these crossing distances, increase some buffering where sidewalks are next to the road, slow down cars that are coming around this curve, we can really increase pedestrian conditions. That was the, that was the supposition of the plan. One thing coming around this corner, you've got basically three lanes of travel when you try to cross right here at the base of the triangle. There's a pedestrian crossing there. But cars are coming around at a very high rate of speed, oftentimes out of two lanes, even though, you know, it's, it's really designed for three lanes. So, cars come flying around that corner, and it's, it's a very negative kind of pedestrian environment right now. So, based out of that plan and Woodward 696 study, this was the, what was approved by MDOT. These are the barrels where you see them narrowing this curve down to one lane to slow traffic as it comes around the curve, to, to reduce the pedestrian crossing distances. Just by having one lane instead of three here, that reduces the time it takes you to cross that by a third. It gives you a better view shed coming out of the corner, and I can say, having gone out there a number of times over the past two weeks to basically put the barrels back in place after they get knocked around a little bit, it is a vastly different experience standing here. Before, when you're standing next to the road there, it was violent. It was like standing on a beach during a, during a hurricane. It was loud, and cars were flying by at very high rates of speed. Now, when you're actually standing here waiting to cross the street, you only have one lane of traffic to worry about, and you only have 11 feet to cross, so you can get across in a matter of seconds. And the car's going slower, it's less loud, the cars are moving at a lower rate of speed, it feels less dangerous. Anecdotally, it's a very, very different experience standing out there on the side of the road as a person. Also anecdotally, just watching, I have not, I have yet to see, I haven't been out there the whole time, but I've been out there busy times. The cars do stack up at busy times a little further than they might have before, but I have yet to see a car that was stacked up, even if it's further down, not get through the light in one cycle. And that's the key consideration. Are we wasting people's time by narrowing this down, by making them sit through two light cycles, whereas they might have previously gone through here in one light cycle? That's a key thing. I have yet to see it happen. And again, that's, that's anecdotal, but that's something that the traffic engineer will take into account based on the data that he collects. So, this is a, just a picture of the study going into place. The one other anecdotal complaint that we've really gotten is by narrowing it down to one lane, we still get people cheating, flying up and cutting in at the last minute. And yes, that's a concern, but if the study proves that the ability is to go, is there to go down to one lane, that's something that we'll, we'll look at addressing, that cutting over the cheating behavior with our, a traffic engineer who does the permanent design. And there are ways that you can design so that that's not possible for people to do that, to, to eliminate that potential threat. So, again, if the function of the intersection is equal, we can move on to the implementation line here. So, our implementation goals are maintaining vehicle capacity but slowing vehicle speed. Speed does not equal capacity. You can move the same number of cars through an intersection and through an area at a slower speed, which improves the pedestrian experience, improves the pedestrian condition. Ease pedestrian crossings by making them shorter, so it's easier for pedestrians to get across the street in a timely manner with fewer lanes of travel to cross, with fewer cars flying at them from many lanes at higher speeds. And then, consider future bike lanes and transit infrastructure. One of the long-term moves is considering that we've got the potential for the bus traffic transit. We don't know if that'll happen or not. We have potential for future bike lanes on Woodward. We're going to work towards that, but we're not ready yet. So, this is a first move towards reclaiming some existing paved space that we could later convert to some of these uses. But in the meantime, they'll just make conditions a little calmer, equivalent, level of service for vehicles, and make the area better for people who are crossing on bikes and on foot. And this is just an example of some, some solutions for bike lanes, which could happen in the future. You can take a travel lane and with paint, turn it into a bike lane. That's just taking back excess capacity that exists in the street. You don't have to move curves, it's not expensive to do this, it's just putting down some paint, and you create bike infrastructure. Later, you can do some other things, create a protected bike lane here, on-street parking serves as a buffer, a protection between vehicles and people on bikes. That's a potential move, it could happen to implement the longer-term vision. And then, this is a more expensive, where you create a protected space for bicyclists that's more aesthetically pleasing, so this is going up the cost ladder. If you can find funding for this somewhere, you know, Pleasant Ridge isn't going to have it, but if we can leverage funds from federal or state or other sources, this is a potential down the road. But again, if you reclaim that space, this is, you can start to move towards that. And that summarizes the Woodward test project that's going on. This time, I want to give a, a quick update on a couple other traffic calming test projects that we're going to be doing or are doing on local streets. So, the methodology, again, is identify problems, test solutions with temporary, quick, and light materials. We bought six of these metal, they're really feed trucks, they're from Tractor Supply Company. We don't have any cattle in Pleasant Ridge, but they do work as planters if you fill them up with some pea gravel and some dirt, and they're a great way for a cheap, low-cost, short-term way of testing some, testing out some things. So, we'll measure results and then implement or revise. It's the same process. So, the problem statement here is we have very high speeds on Ridge Road for a local street. About a year ago, we bought a traffic volume and speed counter. It's a radar device, and we've been testing on streets throughout town. And of all the ones we've tested thus far, Ridge Road has the highest daily traffic volume and highest measured speeds for streets in Pleasant Ridge that aren't named Woodward. So, the 85th percentile speed on Ridge is 32.3 miles an hour. Traffic engineers typically use the 85th percentile speed, actually, it's in the state law, the state police set speed limits based on the 85th percentile speed. Typically, that's the speed that travels, the cars travel where the drivers feel comfortable. So, at 32.3 miles an hour, that's quite a bit above the 25 mile an hour speed limit that we have on Ridge. And it's a very notable thing, that at 32 miles an hour, your chances of death, if you're hit by a car, are 80% that you'll die. At 20 or 25 miles an hour, it's 80% that you'll be fine, that you'll live. So, it makes a big difference. There's a big inflection point right around 25 miles an hour, so there's a real reason why you want to limit speeds at 25 miles an hour. 82.4% of cars speed on Ridge, and it's in a school zone. So, we have some reasons why this is a, this is a street that we want to start looking at ways of slowing that traffic down. So, one of the things we're going to test is, will a mid-block crossing at Roosevelt School be one of those things? And this is an example of a built mid-block crossing. But what it does is, it's a, it's an island that, for one thing, provides pedestrian refuge. You can get across one lane of traffic and wait while traffic clears on the other side to get across. Traffic volumes on Ridge are high enough that this can be useful, but that's not the primary purpose. The purpose here is visually and physically narrows the space, and causes cars to naturally slow down because you don't feel comfortable flying through here at 35 miles an hour because you don't want to break your car hitting the curb or doing other things. So, through the self-preservation of the driver, it causes you just to slow down. This is an example of a test mid-block crossing. We'll probably do an installation somewhat like this with those planter bins that we have, so hopefully a little more aesthetically pleasing than this. The point is to, to get something out there so we can study it. And this is just what it would look like. This is the existing crossing there that's got the pedestrian actuated light, so it's a natural place to try this out. It's in the middle of the school zone where you have kids crossing the street, so it's a natural place to try this mid-block crossing. So, we're going to be putting this out probably early next week. We'll have the planters be a radar thing out, and we'll measure speeds. Another thing we're considering doing is, and this is very, very early, but place projects. This is intersection painting. It doesn't cost anything. Well, it costs money for paint, so it's pretty cheap, but it's placemaking, and it does in some ways help slow traffic as well by simply changing what the road looks like. So, this is something we may start exploring with the schools, see if they want to participate on something like this, where in front of Roosevelt on Ridge, get local artists involved to design something to paint the street with. There's a lot of ways you can do this that are kind of cool. So, no imminent plans to do anything like this yet, but it's something we're looking at that's low cost. And then, finally, Ridge lane narrowing. Right now, Ridge, we have 26-foot wide cross-section from curb to curb, so that's 213-foot wide travel lanes. For reference, interstate lanes, where cars are supposed to be traveling 70 miles an hour or more, those are 12 feet wide. We've got lanes that are wider than interstate width here, and we know that excessive lane width correlates to higher travel speeds. It's been studied, it's proven. You can have nine-to-10-foot wide travel lanes that are appropriate for 20-to-25 mile an hour speed limits. So, you've got excess capacity there. By simply striping the edge of Ridge Road, we could narrow those down to nine-to-10-foot wide travel lanes, and it just creates a side-of-the-road curb space. We don't have enough width to call this a bike lane and officially mark it. You have to have at least four feet of width, and we can't get that, but it becomes a de facto bike lane. It becomes space that a bicyclist can ride in and feel at least somewhat shielded, that, you know, there's a notation that cars aren't supposed to be there. So, we'll, we'll do some of this as well, and then measure if this has any impact. Again, it's a stripe of paint on the side of the road, it's a very low-cost interim solution. And this is out, I took this photograph today, so if you're driving down the alley between Kensington and Demenshire and wondering what's going on, well, this alley is posted one-way between the building and the fence, and then it becomes two-way again north of here. There's a "do not enter" sign, but this is one way of, again, just trying to make cars slow down and take notice that, okay, there's something here that could hit, let's not drive too fast. And we also put it in the, what would be the northbound lane to further reinforce that you're not supposed to be driving northbound through this alley. You know, people are going to be people and probably drive around it anyways, but at least, you know, we're signaling, don't do that. So, that's why these are out there. Again, it's a test, we'll see how it goes long-term. You know, this could lead to some more permanent or more aesthetically pleasing implementations to slow traffic through the alley. And you'll see there are a couple other planters here. These are actually flanking a man door that exists, and it's just to provide some protective space for anyone coming out, that door swinging open out into the alley. So, that's why those are there. Just wanted to give an update why those popped up, and why those are suddenly in the alley. So, that's it. That's the update on the Woodward 696 and some other things that will be happening soon. Did anyone have any questions on the process and what's happening? I think I can answer.
Mr. Mayor, a question for Jim. So, one thing that is natural with any kind of change is that we all need to have time to adjust to the change, and that initially may be shocking or confusing. So, let's say this pans out well, and findings are that it's not negatively impacting the traffic flow, that it's a benefit for pedestrians, and we decide to move forward with these on a permanent basis, these changes on Main Street and Woodward area. Is there some sort of signage that can be done? We kind of touched on this earlier, but kind of like everyone to hear it. What type of signage would you say would be best in your, your current level of experience? And yes, this is all subject to the opinions of the traffic engineer. What types of things could we do to make it more clear that there's something coming ahead that you need to think about what you're doing a little bit more than maybe you do now?
And again, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I would defer to, to any judgment that they have in this, but you could provide some, if you do change the way that Woodward and the curve on the Main Street actually functions, you could do some revised signage to make people better aware of what each lane's assignment is. The right lane would most likely become a right only on the main, and the other two lanes would be through lanes. You know, in order to cut that cutting over behavior, it could be as simple as, instead of having paint on the street that it's very easy for cars to ignore, you actually just build out a curb area to prevent cars from doing that last-minute cut-in. These are all things that we would have to review with the traffic engineer. There's the Michigan Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. It's about 1,000 pages long, and it's the bible on, on traffic control. So, I can speak pretty fluently on traffic calming, but when it comes down to those nitty-gritty details, I, I would have to just say that we can bring it up as an issue to the traffic engineer who helps us design this, if it's something that's feasible to go forward with, and then, you know, they'll have to tell us what can and can't be done.
But you're pretty confident that would be workable? We would be able to put something there to make it more clear to people who maybe haven't driven through there ever before?
Sure.
To make it more easy for them to get through safely?
Yeah, I mean, the, the adjustment period is typically pretty fast on these things. It's a matter of weeks. So, if it's temporary signage, we have to have up for a while, yeah, we can look at that. Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Jim, the, and this is anecdotal, too. I was talking to some of the folks at the business on the Fields Art Studio building, and they were saying, yeah, within a couple days, they saw a marked change of what they were hearing to. You know, the first day, they would hear a lot of honks.
Screams.
Yeah, and then it's sort of, but they said even now already, they just see it's sort of falling into a pattern.
The, the reason that we had the test out there for three weeks is because the first week, we didn't do anything. The first week was just shock and awe and then acceptance. So, we didn't actually start measuring anything until this week, precisely because, you know, we had to let people get over the
Yeah.
... the change, and start to adjust their driving patterns before we started measuring anything.
It's interesting to watch, and it's, as I mentioned, the businesses in the DDA are, were really, you know, open to this idea, and very excited. And, you know, seeing how this is sort of progressing, yeah, it does back the traffic up a little bit more, which is nice because it sort of makes people slow down a little bit, so. Thank you. Thanks for the report, that was interesting. The painted intersection thing is an interesting idea.
Yeah, I can't wait for that. I want one of my books.
You have a big boss.
Any other? Thanks, Jim. The next item. What everybody's been waiting for, I'm sure. Update regarding dangerous dogs slash breed-specific ban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have brought back some additional information. The city attorney has been busy at work. We have three alternative ordinances for you to consider as templates for something that we might start working on for your consideration, and there's some background materials that we have pulled. You know, the, this is a emotionally charged topic, because people love their kids and fear for the safety of their kids, but people who have these dogs love their dogs like their kids, so it, it becomes a very emotional issue, and there's a lot of information out there that is obviously biased or slanted, or, you know, produced by organizations that may have a particular viewpoint or another. We tried to provide some information in your packet that came from sort of neutral, respected sources. We tried to limit the information we provided based on that. So, you see, there's a couple studies from the American Veterinary Medical Association. There's one from the ASPCA. The, one of the studies that the Veterinary Medical Association did was for the Centers for Disease Control, Centers for Disease Control. And then, the White House actually had an official White House response to a petition that was requesting a ban of breed-specific limitations at the federal level. So, you know, that came from really the very top, based on some of this other research that has been done. Just as a quick summary of the research, the American Veterinary Medical Association study of breeds of dogs involved in fatal human attacks in the U.S. between 1979 and 1998, provided an overview of fatal dog attacks. It showed that the pit bull-type, type dogs and rottweilers cause the majority of human deaths, but the report did conclude that other breeds may bite and cause fatalities at higher rates. Fatal attacks represent a small proportion of dog bite injuries to humans and should not be the primary factor driving public policy concerning dangerous dogs. And there's difficulties inherent in determining a dog's breed with certainty, which raises constitutional and practical issues with the enforcement of breed-specific ordinances. That's out of their conclusion, verbatim. A community approach to dog bite prevention by the same American Veterinary Medical Association provided a substantial overview of the many and varied aspects of the dog bite issue, and then it provided some recommended regulatory approaches. This one is long and dense, but they, they recommended a breed-neutral regulatory approach as their preferred method. So, with that, I would turn it over to the city attorney to talk about his memo regarding the, the various ordinance options that exist to us as potential paths forward.
Great, thank you. As the memo notes, currently, the city has no local ordinance. We rely on the state dog law and force through Oakland County Animal Control. As we discussed last month, it is a reactive statute. Things can happen, but only after a dog or other animal causes some serious injury to a person or another animal. The memo also included kind of three Things can happen, but only after a dog or other animal causes some serious injury to a person or another animal. The memo also included kind of three categories of ordinances and had specific examples from an Open County community, beginning with the breed-specific ban, which is what Waterford Township did. They banned what are so-called, commonly known as pit bulls. As the memo notes, there is no breed known as a pit bull, but the Waterford ordinance is more specific than that. But generally speaking, that's what it is. So that's one option, to have either a ban on certain designated breeds or an ordinance that imposes additional regulations on specific breeds. The second approach was adopted by Rochester Hills. It was a local dangerous dog ordinance. It mirrors, in large part, the state law, but it allows for enforcement on a local level with some more flexibility, and it also requires additional registration that isn't found currently in the state law. Again, the Rochester Hills ordinance is also reactive in that before a dog is determined to be dangerous, it has to, again, have caused some serious injury to either an individual or another animal. The third approach was adopted by Farmington Hills, and it addresses both dangerous dogs, as Rochester Hills does, but also potentially dangerous animals. A potentially dangerous animal is one that has caused injury, but not a severe injury, acts in a threatening or aggressive manner, or was found to be running at large more than three times within a 12-month period. And if you see the Farmington Hills ordinance, it's got a fairly specific provision and administrative process to go through to have the dog deemed potentially dangerous. But once that occurs, or once that happens, then additional regulations can be imposed on that animal that include things like additional fencing, additional insurance, markings, requirement for dog obedience training, and similar kinds of additional regulations. There are advantages and disadvantages, obviously, with each approach. Jim has given you some of the issues with breed-specific legislation, and, you know, my memo also outlined some of those areas as well. And I believe at the last commission meeting, there was at least some sentiment that that may not be what some commissioners would like to see. It is, although that, the ordinances that are breed-specific have survived constitutional challenges, it can still be a very expensive process to defend them. The whole issue of what breed you're actually banning is a significant one, both in defining it in the first place in the ordinance and then testing a particular animal to see whether it actually falls within that category, because, you know, obviously, there are a lot of mixed breeds out there, and how do you determine that? That can be a fairly expensive proposition. And then also pointed out that in communities and counties that have had this kind of ordinance, they have found that they have had significant enforcement costs as well as practical administrative difficulties as well, because of which, as was brought out at the last meeting, some 18 states have actually enacted legislation that prohibits local communities from enacting breed-specific legislation, and similar legislation has been introduced in Michigan, although it's still, I believe, at the committee level. Although the Rochester Hills and Farmington Hills approaches avoid a lot of the issues with breed-specific legislation, there are also obviously disadvantages, primarily in terms of cost and the need to have some kind of administrative personnel to enforce them. If you see Farmington Hills, after the initial determination is made by a staff person that a dog is dangerous, potentially dangerous, there's an animal review board that the city has created so that the dog owner can appeal that determination. You don't have to have a separate board, that's the approach the city wishes to go forward. It could be the city commission, it doesn't have to be a separate board, but it's always, I think, wise to have some kind of administrative appeal for that kind of determination, you know, before you would go through the additional regulations. Another issue with potentially dangerous classification, I think we talked about it last month, there's a subjective element there. Do you see when you talk about regulating a dog that acts in an aggressive fashion, that's a subjective determination as to what's aggressive and what's not? But there is no way I can see that you could have a proactive ordinance that's not going to have some degree of subjectivity. There's just no right line that you can draw to make that conclusion. So those are the three approaches. You have the model ordinances if the commission wishes to move forward, you know, with one particular approach, you know, you kind of have the template that we would use, or the commission could opt to take no action and simply rely on the existing state law administered through the county. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? No questions?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a question as much as some thoughts on it. So, this is my own personal thought, of course. So, obviously, staff is looking for some direction on how to proceed forward or whether or not to proceed forward. My personal feeling on it is that I'm not sure that I'm qualified to make this decision myself in a vacuum, and I'm not even sure that we, as a commission, should make this decision in a vacuum, as kind of, like I mentioned last month, if we were to have two options, say, one being do nothing, and another being one of these three items or a different version of one of these three items, I could see something like going to a town hall meeting dedicated just to that event and having those two options there to be discussed by the residents, just to kind of hear what everyone thinks. Because I think this will touch so many people, so many homes, so many families, in one way or another, whether you have dogs, whether you don't have dogs. It's going to affect probably a vast majority of residents. So, yes, we make decisions all the time that affect everybody, tax decisions, water rates, stuff like that, but this is something that, as Jim mentioned, it's an emotional issue also. It's a safety issue, it can be a safety issue. So I don't personally feel comfortable making a decision on this. I mean, I will if it comes to it, but I'd really prefer that we have public input on this in a town hall setting, just dedicated to that. As maybe I mentioned, option one being nothing, option two being some iteration of maybe one of these three, and just see what everyone thinks about that. Do they feel they would like us to proceed forward with this, or do they feel nothing is necessary at this time? So that's how I feel on it. I don't have a specific opinion either way necessarily, or if I do, I'm not sure that it represents what the residents really would like. I don't have enough feedback to know that yet.
I agree that, I don't think we do have enough feedback.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I agree too. I think, you know, we've gotten, we have gotten very limited input, but I think one of the things is we have, you know, there are so, there's such a variety of dogs and situations in the city. I think we need to put the word out there so that, you know, we want residents to feel safe. And I mean, I'm on, en route to the dog park, so I see a wonderful array of dogs every day, and I see a whole, you know, a very varied, varied sets of behavior on these dogs and on the dog owner's abilities to handle the dogs. So I see, you know, all of these different issues I can understand, but I think it is one of those things, I want to hear from more residents on what is going on and how they're feeling. Because you want people to feel safe, but you also, you know, how much can we control, you know, pet ownership and stuff too?
I would only, I would acknowledge and appreciate what Commissioner Foreman and Commissioner Perry have said about harnessing more of the public sentiment. I think the community approach to dog bite prevention by the AVMA was a very useful document in our package, and I would encourage anyone who's interested in this issue to really go through it. Really talks about how preventing these, you know, severe dog incidents are really a community-wide problem that needs to be, that has to be addressed. So I really like this document. I do like, it mentions in there, really gauge, it calls for an opportunity to really gauge resident interest, concern, in a way that's appropriate for the legislation that's being considered. So as far as a town hall dedicated specifically to this subject, I would be all in favor for. If we had, you know, I think Mr. Need did an excellent job of preparing our options here. I think if we, you know, tell our community this is something that we're considering seriously, we would like to have a open forum on this issue. I think that would be very constructive, and it would go towards really gauging the citizen, the level of comfort with the varying legislations being concerned, considered. I can tell you from my perspective, I mean, where I'm sitting and a commission position, I am more interested in a proactive ordinance and not just sitting back and relying on the state statute or something that is more reactive in identifying dangerous animals. One thing that I was really appreciative, looking through the Farmington Hills ordinance, is that I felt it really addressed the concerns about throwing all breeds or all dogs into a pile and saying, "These dogs are bad dogs, we don't want them." I think what the Farmington Hills statute does a good job of saying, "We're not going to single out a breed. What we're going to do is single out specific individual animals who are of concern." And I think, to me, that would be the legislation that I would be most comfortable with going forward, because I do think there has to be something on paper in our community that gives us options if we feel an animal is obviously a threat to the neighborhood. And I think the Farmington Hills goes a long way towards accomplishing that without the heavy-handedness of an across-the-board ban, which I'm concerned about breeds, specific breeds, who have shown to exhibit very violent behavior. But I also recognize that there are individual dogs who, you know, are sweet family dogs. So to me, the Farmington Hills, if we have an opportunity, if it's one or the other, or do nothing or do something, I'd be most comfortable going forward with the Farmington Hills example, but I still would not want to really take anything off the table. If we have a town hall and the community comes out and says, "Yes, we want breed-specific ban," I don't want to have already had made that determination, "Well, we're not considering that." So I guess what I would advise at this point is scheduling a town hall with all three, with all the options on the table, and then afterwards instructing Mr. Need and Jim, "Okay, we've heard from the residents, we've really invested this on our own, this is what we'd like Mr. Need to pursue." I mean, that, to me, that's kind of the next step in this process that I would be comfortable with, because I do agree with you. I do, I would like to hear from the rest of the community, but as I said, I do think there needs to be, my leanings right now are for more proactive ordinance. So if we do anything tonight, I would just say that we schedule a town hall with this issue as the only topic, and then at our next commission meeting, we can instruct staff.
Yes, I'd agree that it would be great to have a town hall to get more interaction with residents and the community to understand. How, I'm interested to see how people, I don't personally own a pet at the moment. I'm curious to see how people live with their pets today. There are quote-unquote "good" dogs that I know are not on leashes around town, and ordinance would require them to be on leashes. They're already required to be on leashes, but we're currently not enforcing it as much as we could. And then we have dogs that are perceived to be bad dogs that we would require to be on leashes and might enforce more heavily because of the presumption that they're bad dogs. So I'd like to see everyone together just to have a conversation about pet ownership, what is necessary for our community. I think that's a good idea. I don't know, does it require a motion to do so, or is that something?
Well, I think what would be helpful would be a motion, and I think what might be helpful as well is some guidance. Should we consider the universe of all three ordinances and the do nothing? Or is there anything that the commission kind of as a group wants to take off the table? Because, you know, you can overwhelm with choice sometimes, and a town hall might be better results if we have some real options that, you know, we're willing to go forward considering.
Well, yeah, while I tend to go toward the do-nothing side of things, would prefer that and have it, you know, neighbors and community deal with these. I would think that taking the breed-specific, I would suggest taking the breed-specific off the table, but that would be my, and continue with the Rochester Hills, Farmington Hills approaches and the do-nothing. But just, yes.
Likewise, I'd say the breed-specific ordinances seem problematic, that's something we could take off the table.
Mr. Mayor, I would agree with that also. Breed-specific, I don't think is the right way, and I think that's a way we can add some value at this process. You know, we're not going to decide the whole thing, but we can narrow the options to a point where we can have a constructive conversation more focused. I wouldn't necessarily want to be married to the full Farmington Hills, whatever 40, how many pages it was, but the concept of that, the proactivity of it, the dangerous dog versus potentially dangerous dog, that concept. And then if residents are interested in that, then we work from there and construct something that isn't necessarily identical to Farmington Hills, but something that fits us. And maybe this does fit us, you know, I don't know, but not necessarily doing that verbatim. So I would personally like to see just two options, nothing or, say, Farmington Hills like. But I don't know if that's what all of you were saying either.
Well, if I may, from my perspective, we have to consider the full gambit of dogs that live in Pleasant Ridge, good, bad, in the middle, and the way that people are living with their pets. And that's the conversation that I think would be useful in town hall. Some of that might be very free-form, because pets are as much a member of the family as anyone else, and I imagine it'll be an emotional conversation, no matter how we structure it. So I'm curious to see what the community has to say about pet ownership as a general statement, so that we can form a piece of legislation or not to fit the needs of the community.
So would you be looking to have any options specifically there to talk about?
I think it would be useful to describe something like the Farmington Hills ordinance, only to provide some boundaries between do nothing and do something. I think the breed-specific legislation is problematic, so that would not be something I'd be in favor of as a general statement.
Greg, is there any, can you give us any good direction or?
Well, it seems like there's a general sentiment that breed-specific is off the table. I think there aren't a lot of differences between Rochester Hills and Farmington Hills, it's that one category of potentially dangerous. So I think a town hall that would have your options or rely on the state law or that kind of approach would be useful. And to address Commissioner Foreman's issue, these were only meant to be sample ordinances to show you the general theory. I agree, the Farmington Hills ordinance appears to be, you know, has some administrative burdens in there that aren't necessarily all that practical, and it certainly, I think, be modified to be more appropriate for Pleasant Ridge.
Just another concern I would add, just devil's advocate, is that we moved to the county to do our animal control. The main reason to do that was to free up our police resources, to work on police business. And yes, this is an important issue. Something needs to be taken care of, we need someone to take care of it, but the county will not do that because they will only enforce state law. So if we create some legislation, they will not be able to enforce that for us. We would probably have to rely on our police officers for that, which is taking a step back to where we were moving away from about a year ago. And maybe that's warranted, that's fine. But I just wanted to kind of throw that out there, that it is moving back to where we were when we intentionally moved away from that model. But again, if there's a need, we have to fill the need.
Well, I think it's important that people understand that too, that is an additional, you're going to be asking an additional burden of the police if we impose this, or we have to come up with some kind of structure, infrastructure to be able to police this kind of.
Then we have to enforce whatever we create equally
That's right.
...across all pets.
Yeah, but I also think our residents have the confidence that there is ordinance on the books that if the police have to be brought into the situation, that there's actually, you know, paper and there's a process that can be followed. But I believe, you know, our officers are out there every day, every hour, you know, protecting us. And I think there are incidences when that protection has to be of, you know, a canine or some other animal. I mean, we were talking, we talked about dangerous animal, that's what the Farmington Hills really addresses, is that this isn't animal. That's what the Farmington Hills really addresses, is that this isn't, in fact, this isn't breed-specific. This isn't, you know, animal-specific. If there is a cat or, or an iguana, you know, I mean, to me, yes, I don't wanna overburden our police department, but I do believe there is a cause when, you know, an animal is threatening, that we have to have the ability as a community to police that. So, yeah, I, I'm not entirely married to the Farmington Hills ordinance either, you know. I, I think, for me, the, the really drawback is this subjective nature that you encounter when you're trying to be proactive, and, and that's where my heart lies, is trying to be proactive, not really relying on the reactive legislation that is existing, but trying to find a proactive way to identify a situation. You can't do that without being subj- subjective. So, I know Farmington Hills, in their statute, they have an animal review board. It's made up of the city manager and the police chief and, you know, authorized veterinarian or, or subject matter expert that will determine that. Is that practical for us? I, I think we could work out something along those lines, but again, like we, we said, you know, that takes time away from, you know, the chief's duties, Jim's duties. Is that warranted across the board? I think there are specific incidences where, you know, that time is, is well-spent if it's in service of protecting our, our residents. So, before we really move, I would just ask you if there's anybody who would...
So, so while I understand that comment, I would say, driving around the city, I see lots of pets playing in their yards and our police patrol every street every day, and if we create a piece of legislation to manage pets through leash laws amongst other things, then those police would be obligated to do something about pets without leashes. And that's kind of a major deal around here, where I know there are lots of pets that play in their yards without leashes. So, it's just something to consider, and that's why I would be in favor of understanding how people actually enjoy pet ownership in Pleasant Ridge, to see what legislation makes sense for our community.
Mr. Mayor, one more comment.
Chief, let's get the chief in.
Just to address something Commissioner Krzyjak said, and again, I was playing devil's advocate, but I agree with you. Police are here to keep us safe, and we all have different thresholds for fear, you know. A little dog might scare me where it might take a bullmastiff to scare you. I may interpret a growling thing as something like it's gonna rip through that fence and kill me, and the bullmastiff to you, when he growls, you may just think he's wanting to play around. So, it's, again, a subjectivity thing, and emotion comes into it, and our familiarity with dogs, our comfort level with dogs in general, or cats, or iguanas, or whatever it is. So, I agree, you know, if we put something on there, we're stepping backward perhaps to where we departed from before, but if we need to feel safe, and this will help make us feel safe, I know our police officers will do whatever it takes for us to feel safe. So, that would be where we would need to go. So, I'm not saying I don't, I wouldn't want us to do that. I just wanted to throw it out there on the table that we made those steps before for a certain reason, because not everyone may have remembered that or been a part of that. I think I covered everything there, so thank you. Sorry, Chief.
Couple points, couple points. Of course, we're here 24/7. Even though we went to the county for animal issues, we get the call first. We would make the determination once we're there to call the county to come and pick up an animal if it was loose. We couldn't locate the owner or something like that. So, we would secure the animal and take care of that at the time. So, we're gonna get a call anyway, and we're here 24/7. The county could be, they have certain officers assigned to certain areas. They could be busy somewhere else. It might take them a while. So, it's gonna be on us anyway, but that's why we're here. Does it then take away from patrol and things like that? It does, but that's why we're here. That's why you pay us to be here. Ultimately, you're looking to create something to keep residents and/or children, or also residents, but more of the concern, safe. So, you can enact an ordinance or a law, and even though there is one that exists already and enhancing it, we're still gonna enforce it. Like Commissioner Scott says, there are people that run out in the front and their dog, they're taking the garbage out. They don't put their dog on a leash. It's out there. It's whatever. Could it do something? Of course. It's an animal. You don't know what it's gonna do. Ultimately, the safety factor relies on us teaching ourselves and our kids to be aware of situations and the pet owners to be aware of that potential situation. Excuse me, fighting a cold. It could be a dog, so you teach your kid, "Hey, the, the dog might do something, so be wary." So, you enact an ordinance for the dog, but we have strangers too that we tell our kids, "Be wary of strangers." We don't have an ordinance in strangers, people. You can enact ordinances and things like that, and I think the town hall thing would probably be the best idea to get a feel, like you said, of everybody, but know too that it's not just Pleasant Ridge residents. If you drive around and look, people from all of the area come here and walk their dog because it is Pleasant Ridge. They wanna look at the homes. They feel safe here. That's why they walk here. The dog park is open, not just to residents, but other people too who come into the community. So, it affects a wide variety of people other than just the residents. Excuse me, sorry. Any questions?
So, was, were there any comments?
Valerie Newman, 19 Maple Theater spoke last time about it, and I appreciate the consideration that everyone's giving us, and I think town hall meeting is probably a good idea. I just wanna add, and I played phone tag with Greg since the last commission meeting, trying to talk to him before this meeting, so I apologize that we never touched base. He was very good, though, about calling me back. So, it wasn't his fault. Just, just two busy attorneys. But, but, but I, I think a town hall is a great idea. We should get as much resident input, and I think a lot of that input last time was from non-residents. But also, I think we should be focused in terms of, I, I don't think it's gonna increase much on the police, and I think there's a lot of proactive things we can do upfront when you're licensing your dogs and things of that nature that would make enforcement virtually nonexistent, except for people who, you know, maybe don't buy their licenses in the first place and don't obey the laws anyway, and in those cases, you know, you might need the police to go out and do something. But I, I, I do have some other ideas that could attach, and I've talked with the NJF about some proactive ideas and in terms of fencing and, and control of the animal. I mean, you sometimes see people walking a dog and, and you think who's walking who kinda thing, although I get that sometimes with my little Shih Tzu, so. But him I can control, you know, like I can just pick him up and he's not gonna hurt anybody. But with a bigger dog, you know, I would never walk a very strong dog unless it was super well-trained, because I just don't weigh that much, and I, and I couldn't control the dog unless I had, you know, really good command over it. And I know people like Charlie, you know, not to call Charlie out, he's still here, but, you know, and other people who walk their dogs without leashes, but his dog is so great and so timid, you know, the dog will run away from you if you try and, and pet Finny.
Jim, we need a owner to dogs.
So, but it's, but that, that sort of responds to Brett's comment about how do people interact with pets, and, and how do you know, right? Then how do you know? How do I know his dog is safe? And we don't. I, I mean, they're animals. They're unpredictable. I would never walk my dogs without a leash 'cause I know they wouldn't behave themselves. But certain owners are very good at training their dogs and have very good control over them, and, but yes, there's leash laws and they should be enforced. So, I think that there's a lot that we can do that would not tax the police, that could make people feel more comfortable, that would be proactive, and would not be invasive, I guess, on dog owners. That would help us as a community, and so I really think it's, it's probably a fairly easy solution. So, in a town hall, I would certainly recommend that we limit the choices. I agree to take the breed-specific ban, especially since there's a pending resolution, pending bill in the, in the Senate right now. Who knows what will happen with it, but it's obviously a, a very hot topic, and I, it's too, it is, I agree, it's too difficult to enforce and there's too many variables, but I would strongly recommend narrowing the choices for a town hall and then giving the information that's already been given out here to help people, inform people, so they have that easily accessible.
Okay.
Yes. Question for you and/or Jim. Maybe this is something we decide offline, but what can we do to help structure the conversation aside from limiting the options? Obviously, we're gonna wanna have some sort of ground rules, you know, 'cause this can get emotional. We wanna be sure that everyone's respectful and, do we really wanna keep it limited to certain areas of discussion, like Commissioner Scott mentioned? How do you interact with dogs? What do you think about these particular choices? I think, you know, it could easily become something different from what we intend, so I don't know if we lay some ground rules in the beginning or...
I think we'll have to come up with some ground rules, because we've seen it before go off on tangents that we can't, you know, but I think that's what we'll have to talk about. If we can get a motion to have a town hall meeting.
Is that a hint?
Yes.
My name's Jeff. I live at 20 Maple Field, and just part of what Mr. Krzyjak, you know, brought up about being proactive, that's what we're concerned about. We wanna be proactive in this thing, and even the Farmington Hills legislation that was a sample, to me, is not proactive enough. Three times to see a dog loose, it only takes once. If, if it's not the right dog, it only takes once, and somebody's face might be ripped off. That's, that's important to us. We just want safety. I had my air cond- new air conditioner put in. I wanted to move the location of the air conditioning, okay, to a different location. I had to get a permit. I had to get an inspector out to make sure, does it look slightly from the street? Is it far enough away from my neighbor so it doesn't bother him with the sound? How hard is it when we license a dog to take a look at the dog, take a look at the fencing? Just, it's all about just containing the animal where they're supposed to be contained and controlled when you're walking it. That's all we're asking. So, the Farmington Hills thing is a start, but I think it needs to go a step farther a little bit with some, it doesn't need really a lot of police enforcement. It's just initial upfront registration and assess the property. Is the fence big enough to handle this beast? Or large dog? If it's a smaller dog, maybe a cyclone fence is okay. Can this dog leak this fence? Yeah, it might have a chance of doing that. We just wanna protect the small dogs, the children, and the people of the community. That's what we're looking for.
Yeah.
Of course. Thank you.
Jeff, could you give us your last names?
Augustin, A-U-G-U-S-T-Y, and 20 Maple Field.
Thank you.
And I would only say to Jeff's point, the proactivity and, and how we define that, just like Mr. Need was saying, you know, the Farmington Hills ordinance doesn't have to be carbon copied and, and put to Pleasant Ridge. The one thing about the Farmington Hills ordinance that I interpreted, and, and maybe, you know, but the three strikes on the, on the being out, that's not the only determination. You know, there was also a determination that could be made short of that, you know, if the dog is acting aggressive, you know, unprovoked. So, there, there is multiple kind of ways that we can be proactive, and that's something that we can craft if, if the commission, you know, decides to go that way. But the Farmington Hills is a start. You know, I, I think last month, we, you know, we came to the consensus that we had, you know, we were interested in at least examining. I think now we're coming to a consensus that says we're gonna continue this discussion with, with the broader community, and, you know, I, I think from my perspective that, you know, it's a good thing that we're having this conversation. Part of, I think, a town hall, like Commissioner Foreman was saying, is, okay, examination of the Farmington Hills ordinance or nothing, or high, or some sort of ordinance, but also a community discussion to Commissioner Scott's point about how do owners interact with their pets and how should? I mean, that's what I like about this community approach that the American Veterinarian Association put together, is that they recognize that, you know, you can, you should, there are situations where you should, you know, have rules on the books, but there's rule breakers for any law, right? So, part of it is a community awareness, a community education that says, "Hey, yes, your dog is sweet and everybody loves your dog, but, you know, there are things you can do to protect the neighborhood." So, I think continuous conversation with the town hall with the consideration of a, of an ordinance is, is the correct course of action right now.
Okay. Is there a motion to have a town hall?
Mr. Mayor, I move that city commission and/or city administration establish a town hall for the purpose of discussing potential dangerous, dangerous animal legislation or potentially dangerous animal legislation, or no action whatsoever on a date to be determined by city and staff.
I'd like to amend that slightly. I'd like to say animal legislation, not dangerous animal legislation.
No problem.
A second.
Can we take a vote?
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyjak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes.
Motion. City managers report.
Can I have one more quick question? I'm sorry. Greg, is there a difference? So, you were saying these were just some sample legislations that, do, are there things that are different between the Rochester Hills and Farmington Hills ones that you feel, you know, should we get rid of one of them or just keep both of those and sort of compare and contrast some issues with them?
Farmington Hills is the proactive because it has that potentially dangerous category on top of the dangerous category that Rochester Hills has. So, I think if you combine them as the motion suggests, it would be an appropriate topic of discussion.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
I just wanna make one comment quickly as Arianna, Arianna Kuhn at 40 Maple Field. I am a lifelong animal lover. I have a dog. My husband walks him off-leash, as we all learned earlier. I walk him on leash. And I just wanna say, with you guys moving forward the town hall, I think that's awesome, but if potentially we could consider being residents-only, being in the animal community, I've been very active with the Humane Society. There are a lot of third parties out there that have other motives other than having a safe community, and as we talked about earlier, they can get kind of out of hand. So, I think it really needs to be residents talking to residents about a common interest of making the community safe versus people with other interests, like having a loud voice in there and overshadowing what the meaning of the, what, the meaning of what the meeting's for.
I think that's a great point.
Although open meetings won't allow that, I don't think.
Yeah.
You can certainly limit comment, but you can't stop, you can't stop non-residents from speaking in front of public. Anybody can come to this meeting, and residents or non-residents, you can't cut their rights of speech, but you can regulate it to keep it under control, certainly.
We'll be right.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one final question for Mr. Need. Greg, do you feel that there's anything missing from the discussion we had tonight? Anything else that we need to look at right now?
No, I think, I think I've identified the options, and I think the town hall is an extra appropriate step, I assume.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, I hope that as many people who jump in on Facebook will show up at the actual town hall meeting. And if you're gonna, if you can say it on Facebook, that's fine, but unless you can, unless you come up and say it to other people in, in, in an open forum, you know, it's, it doesn't mean anything. So, please, make it to the, to the town hall meeting. That's all.
City management.
This will be fast. Another thing that's gonna be happening on Woodward, thanks to a grant from MDOT and the fact that the test projects ended up being cheaper than we thought, so we're gonna be able to do some things. We know that our streetscape is aging. We know that we've got trees that are growing. We know we've got sidewalks that are heaving, so in the interest of, one, improving the health of our trees that we have, and also softening the streetscape, which is a whole lot of concrete and hardscape right now. In the next, I don't know, week or two, we'll be implementing some changes at limited points. We don't have the money to do the whole streetscape, but basically, and this is my incredible photo shop sketch. Amazingly impressed. What we're gonna do is around the tree wells that we have, we're gonna pull out a concrete slab on either side and, huh? Open it up and basically just create a little planting area with some grasses, things that you don't have to irrigate, things that aren't fussy, things that are hardy. Native plants, yep. Grasses that won't get too tall, but will soften it up, and, and the other benefit of this is this will triple the amount of area that rain and water can get into the ground to nourish the trees that we have. If you look, a lot of the trees are getting to the point If you look, a lot of the trees are getting to the point where they're, they're kinda growing into the tree grates and pushing the tree grates up and pushing the sidewalks up. So, this eliminates some trip hazards and it softens the area, gets more water into the ground. Um, so, we're gonna try this. The two places we're gonna be trying this are, um, through the MDOT grant, we'll be planting seven empty tree wells that are at the southern end of the Woodward streetscape. So, in front of the funeral home, uh, in front of Cork. So, those, those will be filled and we'll be pulling these out at the same time. We'll also be doing this, um, at the north end in front of the Ameriprise building. So, uh, from the Ameriprise building up to Kensington, the five. This is kind of in a lee where we've got two rows of trees. We're only doing this for the ones next to the sidewalk because of money. But, um, it's a start and, uh, we'll start this, see how it goes, see if we need to adjust. Um, we looked at some options for curving around here. Don't know if that'll hurt the trees because the root system for the trees is gonna be close. You'd have to cut into it to put foundations for curving. So, we're just gonna do a grade level thing. We'll pull some dirt out, put mulching in, um, and we'll see how it goes. If we need to come back and look at something else because the mulch is getting messy, we will. But, you know, we're trying something and, and we'll, we'll see how it goes and improve from there. Uh, another quick update because the new water billing structure is in place. And this is actually a timely thing. I just wanted to give an update on where Pleasant Ridge stands in the region. Because, uh, if you, you think that Pleasant Ridge's water was more expensive than gold, maybe it wasn't past. But I'm happy to report that, and these aren't my numbers. These are numbers reported by SAQVA, the Southern Oakland County Water Authority. Um, this is a study, a water rate study they do every year for all of their member communities. Um, last year, you'll see, we were number one. And that's not a bad thing. All right, I'm sorry, that's not a good thing when it comes to water rates. This is your water and sewer cost per thousand square feet of water, 7,400 dish gallons of usage. Uh, we were 125.96 average, um, cost per unit there. Uh, with the changes that occurred from 2014 to 2015, you'll see we've dropped to four, which is good. Uh, the average last year was 90.91 for, uh, every 7400 gallons you used. The average jumped eight and a half percent this year amongst all the communities to 98.63. We're at 112.20. Um, our rates went down, or our costs went down 10.9%. We're a oak, is now top of the heap. They went up 18.5% last year. Huntington Woods jumped 15%. The average was up eight and a half. Beverly Hills was up 29%. So, everybody's, everybody's water costs are going up. The other thing I point out with this too is that the communities that are cheaper, Southfield, Beverly Hills, I don't know how they do it. Beverly Hills went up 30%. So, they, they obviously had some issues. But Berkeley, Southfield, Birmingham, Clausen, all of those communities have higher resi- non-residential users. And when you're selling water and you've got industrial users, that actually really drives rates down for residential users. When you look at Letherton Village, um, and Pleasant Ridge, we have very similar populations. And Huntington Woods, who's about 2.5 times our population, but pretty much all residential, all of our rates are right in the same area because when you only have residents who have to carry, carry water, uh, rates are higher because we can't pass our costs on to those industrial users. And if, here, when, when Walker Wire, our biggest industrial user, was making steel, and that's a very water-intensive thing, when they left town, our water rates went up because they use so much that they subsidize everyone's usage elsewhere. So, this is, I think, a positive development that shows that, you know, some of the things we've been working on over the last year have had a real impact. We went down 10.9%. Uh, we're much closer to the average than we used to be. The other question, the biggest question that we get is now on the water bills that we're breaking out water and sewer. It's not new. Sewer was always part of that $125. It just wasn't called out on the bills. And that's a fact of the matter that in the water fund, it's an enterprise fund. It has to cover its own costs. Sewage treatment is the biggest single component of the water fund, has been for years, will be for years because we have a combined sewer system. So, we have to pay for all of the stormwater that goes on the sewers. So, even if you irrigate, yes, you've been paying that, that sewer usage and that's how it's been. The only, all the communities have that rolled into their water bills except for Berkeley. Berkeley does a little, something a little bit different with their stormwater charges. Uh, so, that isn't reflected in the rates because they pass that along to non-residential at a much higher rate for their, um, stormwater charges. It wouldn't work for us like it works for Berkeley because we don't have the non-single-family residential base that they do. So, that's a distinction. That's a question we've been getting. Nothing's really changed. It's just been called out on the bill. So, um, I thought that was a little interesting. That's all I have.
Other business?
Okay. Really quickly, I'd like to announce the Book Club for October. It's Working by Studs Terkel. This is, uh, a volume that was compiled in the 80s on how Americans were working at that time. Obviously, a lot has changed since then. Um, but it was suggested that this would be a great, uh, time to reexamine this work. So, if you're interested in discussing this book with us, please join us at, uh, the Gainsborough Hut on October 26th. That's a Monday at 7:00 PM. Where the Book Club will be discussing, uh, Working by Studs Terkel. And, um, if Jim would, um, put up, uh, a photograph that was taken this afternoon, um, these are the little libraries that were installed in Hessel Park, uh, over the weekend. The one on the right was crafted by, uh, Pat Gross, uh, and the one on the left was crafted by Tom Troyder. And, um, they are the first installments of the Pleasant Ridge Little Library Network. And I was happy to receive an email from Diana Keefe. She's the principal at Roosevelt. And she noticed them and was, uh, very happy that they went in. And, um, we'll be arranging some sort of, uh, event with the students at Roosevelt to introduce them to the little libraries at Hessel. I'd also like to say that, uh, if you see a couple posts down at Flynn Field, that Jake Covert has been working on that park and that little library will be operational by the end of the week. So, if you pass by and, and glance and, and see a book that you want, please take one. If you have a book that you'd like to share with the community, please leave one. And, um, that's the, uh, little libraries. So, thanks to everyone who, uh, put in the hard work to make that a reality. I know, um, Jim helped with some of the locating. Um, but what you see was entirely done by volunteers. So.
We knew it was gonna happen eventually.
Those are great.
That's why I'm here. Thank you.
Anything? Anything?
I do.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
Sorry.
Must get an election.
It's election. So, there's an election on November 3rd. Absentee ballots are available now. Applications are available online. You can come in or send me an email. Um, ballots, last day to get a ballot is Saturday, October 31st. I will be in the office from 9 until 2 for people wishing to obtain an absentee vote.
Speaking of elections and everything, I did, I wanted to, you know, the previous mayor was here for 20 years. Um, what's fascinating, what's amazing to me is that the mayor of Huntington Woods is retiring after 34 years as mayor.
Wow, wow.
I don't know, but anybody who wants to go to an open house, anybody who wants to see who's somebody who actually took the heat for 34 years in Huntington Woods. Um, there is an open house forum on Monday, November 9th, um, from 5 to 7 at their recreation center. And so, a lot of people probably know Ron from, from various, um, organizations, meetings, et cetera, et cetera. He's been around long enough and certainly deserves a hearty round of applause for putting up with it. I think the flood finally did it to him, as he said. And so, quite a career. So, any other things? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Favor?